First we'll entertain a motion to adopt our amended agenda. So move. Move by Henry, seg by Ralph. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Next, we'll have roll call, please.
Branch?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Carroll?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Hussey?
Here.
Mahalovich?
Prather?
Here.
Schulte?
Here.
Scrivner?
Next, we're calling our city administrator, interim city administrator, city attorney, Drew Hilbert. Drew, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first thing we've got on the agenda is something that came up rather suddenly, which is the MSP agreement. And we had some calls yesterday requesting an opportunity for some public comment, so that's what the amended agenda is about. So we did want to offer an opportunity to allow people to speak on 2013-102, and that would be a bill with a state for MSP. You know, actually, Mr. Mayor, could I just go ahead and talk about that first, and then you can-
I'll tell you what, why don't we go ahead and have a first reading now of 2013-102?
Okay.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an use agreement with the state of Missouri Office of Administration, Division of Facilities Management, Design and Construction relating to the Missouri State Penitentiary Site.
Now, we need a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a motion to suspend?
Seg.
It's been moved and segmented by Rick and Rick. Is there anyone on the council that would not like to suspend the rules? If so, the rules are hereby suspended.
Very good.
Here, I'll let you start with the introduction, and then we'll ask for audience participation.
Yeah, we kind of wanted to get this ahead of time, and then we are going to offer the opportunity for anybody to sign up, and we'll just have the mayor ask who wants to speak sign up. You each have three minutes. We're limiting it to 2013-102. It won't be about the conference center. We've got two public hearings next week on the conference center, so we'll have a lot of that next week. The bill before you is would adopt a contract that we've discussed with the state of Missouri that was announced by Governor Nixon yesterday. As we all know, MSP was closed due to some mold issues, and the state's been feverishly working to try to correct those, and has come to the state, come to us as well and asked for our assistance, and together we can make this thing happen. The contract itself provides that there'll be some repairs and remediation, specifically as to Housing Unit 1, which would seal and repair the windows, replace the roof and do some remediation. Housing Unit 3 will seal and repair the windows, replace the roof and remediation. Housing Unit 4 would seal the windows, add plastic glass to the windows on the south side at the front of the entrance. Roof repairs and remediation cleanup, and then also at the gas chamber, roof repairs, remediation cleanup. The city estimates this to be $1.7 million. However, as we all know, costs are a little higher sometimes, so they've asked for this contract, where each party will be up to $1 million. So the state will have $1 million in this, up to $1 million, and we'll have up to $1 million. There are still being some testing, although we believe, the governor's office believes that the $2 million will cover it. Should we exceed those $2 million, then we can, the contract calls it, we'll continue to negotiate with the state, and if we can't resolve it at that point, we can terminate the agreement. However, both sides believe that we can get this thing done for that. What is the city getting in exchange for the $1 million? The tours will resume in spring, or hopefully in March. We'll have unfettered use for tours, and we can plan, and we can plan for a long term, and I'll get to the term in a second. Special events can be utilized at the grounds, which is something we haven't really been able to do before. If we make a request, we make it 30 days ahead of time, and they have to respond within 20. And if they don't respond within 20, then our use is deemed acceptable. The city has the right to operate and manage a coffee bar and a gift shop. Now, the state was concerned about, the reason they want oversight over some of their uses is they want to make sure it's appropriate for state use. You know, there are certain activities that aren't family-friendly that the state was concerned about. Tours can occur, and use can occur from March 1st to November 30th during December, February, and January would not be available, but that's mostly due for weather concerns. Should the state have the opportunity to redevelop it in accordance with the master plan, they can notify us. We've got some language in that says, "An opportunity arising for redevelopment means that there's a binding present contractual commitment involving the state of Missouri in construction by the master plan within six months of the date of the notice of termination." So they can, they have to be, they have to break ground before they can terminate for that purpose. If they do terminate for that purpose, then we'll reimburse pro rata over the first term of the lease. So they will repay the money based on how long the use is. They agree to maintain the premises going forward, so you know, what if the roof needs additional repair? That is on the state. We agree to share some of the utilities, do some snow and ice removal, do some janitorial and garbage and trash removal, do some general lawn care for half the year, so we're kind of splitting the day-to-day expenses. And of course, the big one is the term. The term is up to a 25-year lease. It's a 15-year first term with two five-year renewals. The five-year renewals can only be opted out of if there's good cause. So we think that is kind of a long-term solution to our problem. I think the CVB is very excited about it. Couple of other issues to point out. The million dollars will come from the capital improvement sales tax, which was passed in The literature for the capital improvement sales tax was put out by the committee, suggested $2 million for MSP development, so we think that the use of this funds is very much what was intended. That money can only be used for capital improvement projects, and it can only be, and presumably, we only want to use it for those projects for which we've promised the public. So I know one issue that comes up sometimes, especially in our many issues, is how come we have some money for some things and not money for other things? Well, because the cap improvement sales tax is opposed to the voters that the council made, that they would do certain things with the projects, and state law says it has to be capital improvement-type stuff. So I believe that the council's fulfilling their promise by using this money to develop capital improvement sales tax. An issue that should be addressed is that we didn't have that money programmed in for this year. It's a cash flow issue. We had looked at 2016, I believe, to have these funds available, but what we've done is reordered that cash flow. We've talked, essentially what happens is that the parks money for their multi-person building came in earlier, but they're not actually ready to use it yet, so we'll push the parks money back, pay the MSP money forward, and have that money available for this project. Had some questions about whether we get return on investment on this type of deal. I would never suggest to you that the cost that people pay for their tour repays this million dollars. It's part of an overall economic impact. What the person generates in terms of tours is a very small sample of that. What brings people to town? The example I've been using recently is one of the few parks of being city administrators, I get to go to CVB meetings with potential people coming in, and you know, there's big events who want to come to town, and I've heard a couple of them now say, you know, "What can you do for us when we get there?" And you know, the festival districts and the beautiful downtown are always high points. So, "Well, what else do you have for us later on?" And they point out, you know, tours at the prison, and the people get all excited, and that's the deal clincher when I see it. So are those type of groups coming only for the prison? Probably not. Are they coming because of the prison? That's a pretty strong way to say yes. So I believe over the 25 years of this term, you will easily exceed your investment. And of course, we're not investing in this for returns to this corporate city of Jefferson coffers. This is an investment in the community, so that, you know, the rising tide raises all ships. People come in, they spend money, they spend it at the restaurants, they spend it at the hotels, hopefully they spend the night. So the hotels and the restaurants and the gift shops all get more revenue, they hire more people, get more jobs. Obviously, that's the goal of economic development, is to bring up everything. So I think this is probably as good as we could have hoped for. The state was very easy to work with once they recognized the problem and saw us as a solution, and so I think I'm very happy with the outcome of this proposal. I think it's a good partnership. Happy to answer any questions.
Drew, first I want to thank you for all your help, and also want to point out a couple of other people here. Obviously, Senator Kehoe, our governor, obviously played a huge role in this. Doug Nelson with OA, Kathy Brown with OA. Really nice that everyone was able to get on the same page on this and get this fixed quickly, and hopefully we'll get that done tonight. Before we have questions, I think Ralph had a statement that he had to make. Ralph?
Yeah, in regard to the MSP contract, I will recuse myself from participation to avoid a conflict of interest.
Okay, and that's due to your employer, correct? So the audience isn't wondering? All right. At that point in time, any questions for staff by council?
Yeah, if you'd be with me, if you'll just take a list of people you want to-
Okay, do we have anyone in the audience, please, that would like to talk about MSP, either pro or con? Kind of feel like Bill Gratz, going once, twice? All right, that's sold. Okay, any debate by council members? Comments? Bob?
I guess I have a question. On maintenance and repairs 4.1, it says, "If parties understand and acknowledge that premises are old and in continuing need of capital repairs, states under no obligation to make such repairs or any necessary or ongoing improvements throughout termination agreement." And you did say, Drew, that they would take care of ongoing maintenance. Isn't there a little bit of a conflict there?
Well, yeah, maybe I didn't say that quite correctly. I should have said, I suppose, that the city's not responsible for those ongoing maintenance. If it's going to be done, it's done by the state. We don't have an obligation or an ability to put any more money into it. I may have got that confused, as our discussions with OA, they indicated that they would. That may be slightly-
So they're saying here they're under no obligation. It doesn't mean that they won't, it just means that they have an obligation.
Right.
But we don't have an obligation to either.
That's correct. We don't have the hammer on them on that regard. However, my point being that their obligation under this obligates them to have the tours open. So they said we can do it, so if they fail, live up to their obligations, the contract issue then.
Okay, and you did mention the termination clause and the fact that there would be a pro rata should they do it in the event of development in accordance with the plan. What about a situation where they would not go ahead and maintain, and so the premises, for whatever reason, would not be usable? Would there be any pro rata in that regard?
Well, you'd be in the contract damages at that point, I believe, because much like a landlord tenant lease, where the obligation is to give someone a place that they can reasonably live, they're telling us, we have the ability to hold the tours and the events, and if they can't fulfill their issue, their part of the contract agreement, then you have contractual damages. So the issue would be how much are damages? Probably a court would say, pro rata is what's how you look at it, you've got so much money into it. That's not, we didn't do what's called liquidated damages, which says exactly how much the damages are if they fail to do it, so you just fall back to contractual damages. So what are your damages as a result of they're not holding up their end of the bargain?
Okay, now that, would that be in conflict with 3.2.7, where it says that it's subject to as-is condition of the premises? Would they not be under any obligation to do anything additional?
No, I think they would be, because the as-is condition is after the repairs are done. So if they find out in 10 years, there's a ton of metal where the roof falls in, that's not the as-is condition after the repairs are done. That would be my argument anyway, if it came to it.
You're giving them a preview, then, if we-
That's just a thread, I guess, I don't know.
No, I'm just, okay.
Any other questions, anything else, Bob, on that? Any other questions of council, or Drew? Carlos?
I don't know if it's a question for you, Drew, or for Ms. Gillespie, but the average number of people that come to do the tours here is what?
Well, we're barely on target for 20,000, where Diane's at.
That's just for tours?
Tours alone, I think the target this year is 20,000, so we certainly hope to grow that.
And the average cost for each person for the tour?
I think they've done some discussion on that, and the average spending is about $36 a person. $53, $66 per bed tripper is what you said.
Okay. By the way, Diane, thank you for all your help, too. I didn't see you back there when I was going through the list. It's been a tough couple of weeks. Anyone else to my left as far as questions or comments? Seeing none? Bob?
It says that any net income after all expenses and so forth would be expended by the city to make repairs and improvements. I presume that the, everybody, I mean, everybody's signing off on it, so I presume everybody's okay with that. Is the CVB okay with not being able to use any of those revenues for any other operations purposes?
I'm not concerned about that unless we grow a lot, because the tours themselves don't generate much money for the CVB. It's generating for the community at large is where that $50 goes, and maybe we actually get, we're not making any, CVB is not making money on the tours, and especially because we're going to add in here a little bit of electricity cost, a little bit of trash and maintenance cost, so I don't see any problem with that at all. Now, I suppose if the tours grow to, you know, 80,000 in a year, that might be an issue, so I guess there is some risk, but-
Of course, it's like plow and seed money back into it. You hope by improving the property that you go ahead and realize even larger impact for the community.
Yeah, I hope we have that problem someday.
I hope we do, too.
Great. Carrie?
Thank you. As the council leads on to the convention and visitors bureau, I'm so proud of what Diane Gillespie and her staff have done on these tours. I know it started with Steve Picker and his vision, and when you think about the numbers, I think it took something like this situation to really bring it to the forefront of what this means to our city and our community. The number of tours, the number of hotel rooms that had to be canceled, the number of tickets that had to be refunded. This is real dollars, it's real numbers, and it really was never on our radar until this happened. So I'm really excited that the city and state are working together. It's a good example of that partnership, because it is there, and anyone who doubts that the state wants to work with the city on MSP, this is an excellent example of us working together. And when Drew mentioned deal clincher tonight, when we're talking about bringing groups and visitors and conventions here, I truly know that that is, that's something that we have that no other community has. And as we're looking at our conference center and those type of things, looking at MSP is a very important piece of that, so it's an exciting agreement and exciting time for all of us. Thank you.
Any other comments or debate by council members? Seeing none, roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, third reading.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a use agreement with the state of Missouri Office of Administration, Division of Facilities Management, Design and Construction relating to the Missouri State Penitentiary Site.
Roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Abstain.
Carroll?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Looks and passes. Thank you very much for the entire community, and like I say, everyone I mentioned earlier, and some of them may have forgotten, what a great project, and we look forward to working with the state to get the mold corrected at MSP. Next, a big presentation tonight, we have number five. I'll turn it over to Drew Hilbert again to introduce our developers for the evening, and obviously it looks like they brought a few people with them. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We invite both developers. The Farmer brothers are here. The Earhards still have scheduling conflict and couldn't make it, and of course, you know, it wasn't a requirement to be here, so we just wanted to make sure they know and the public knows we're not holding it against them. We just wanted to offer an opportunity to both developers, if they were available, to come in and tell us, and most importantly, the public, what the advantages are of their final and best proposals, so we'll turn it over to you.
Drew, before they start to go, can you tell us what you thought were the ground rules as far as questions after this? What do we have coming up, since we still have the media here, to make sure that the public hearings and whatnot are not about for next week?
Sure. I think the understanding is that today will just be the opportunity to make a presentation, but we will hear what we hear tonight, and then ask questions at a later time. Obviously, the council is in charge, so you can do what you like, but that's my thought, is it's best to just hear what they've got to say and go at this later. Next Monday, we will have a meeting with Charles Johnson, who is our facilitator slash consultant on this thing. He'll give us his advice. We are going to have a portion of that meeting to be public. The reason for that is that we want the public to hear what we hear about what his advice is. He'll go through the criteria in the original RFP and give us his advice. We'll then go into closed session, so you can, you know, yawn curse and talk to each other frankly about these things, I suppose. And then, I did skip a meeting. Tuesday at noon, there'll be a public hearing, so the public can address the conference center proposals. If the council can be here, I'm certain they will be here. We will record those, so that they can watch them at home. If they can't, come that day, then Tuesday nights, our meeting with the developer, and then Thursday night, one week from today, I guess, we will have another public hearing to the folks that can't get here during the day and want to get here at night, have an opportunity to tell the councilmen. And of course, all our councilmen's phone numbers are listed on the website, so that you can call them on their own, if you're welcome, and give them your advice if you can't be here either time. And then, next, two Mondays away, the 17th, the schedule is for the council to select a developer, and that really starts a lot more hard work. At that point, if we select one of the two developers, we get in some contract negotiations and start hammering out details, so it's certainly not the end of the line, but gives us a start of phase three if we select somebody.
Drew, I want to thank you on behalf of our entire community for everything that you've done. Roger Schwartz obviously isn't with us anymore, everything he's done, and everything that your staff has done to get this to this point. This has been a long, I won't call it a battle, it's just been a very long issue at this point in time. And with that, Kirk and Rob? Yes, sir?
Drew, I believe you said that Mr. Johnson will be here on Monday, because Monday's a holiday.
Tuesday. If I said Monday, Tuesday.
Okay.
Tuesday noon, Tuesday night, Thursday night.
And also Monday, the 18th, is another of the holidays. Kirk and Rob, welcome, guys.
Great, thank you.
Welcome back.
Mayor, thank you very much for the opportunity. Council, other city leadership and staff, we appreciate the opportunity this evening. I'm Rob Kingsbury, this is Kirk Farmer with Farmer Holding Company. I'm going to do my best to speak into the microphone the whole night. We've got a short presentation, and we want to encourage everyone to go tomorrow. Our full best and final proposal will be available. The slides that we are going to show tonight are really speaking aids, but they do a good job providing visuals and really a layout to cover the information that we'd like to share with you all. They're high points. Just hit this right here. No, just show me how to do it. There we go. We felt like, before we got started, it would be prudent to quickly go through our original proposal and then transition to our best and final proposal. The first slide that we have here is a view of the mall with the hotel and convention center as we originally proposed it on the southeast one-and-a-half-acre outlot. There's several reasons why we did that originally. This is no longer our plan. A big driver was because the city leadership made themselves very clear that there were a handful of items that really were non-negotiable for the developer, and I'll touch on those in just a few moments. This, again, was our first proposal on the one-and-a-half-acre southeast outlot, 126 rooms and about 10,000 square feet of net meeting space, much smaller than the plan that we will present to you all tonight. Again, from our first proposal, this is the first floor of the proposed Courtyard Marriott. You can see on the right side of the slide about 10,000 square feet of net meeting space with the first-floor layout of the hotel. Okay, now we're going to transition to the scope for our best and final proposal. Three things we heard you all loud and clear on. Number one, 30,000 square feet of net meeting space, which I'll talk about in a moment, requires the developer to provide 60,000 square feet at a minimum of gross space. 20,000 square foot ballroom, 10,000 square feet of additional meeting space to get to 30,000 feet. Also, 150-room hotel, which will be connected to the hotel, will be connected to the convention center. Give you a quick idea there, we're going to go to the next slide, and it'll give you a little bit more of an easily readable diagram. So we're looking at Capitol Mall as exists today with the addition of two items, really three items. Number one, on the south, 150-room Courtyard Marriott Hotel that is connected to 20,000 square foot ballroom. That 20,000 square foot ballroom, the next slide will show us, has all the pre-function space necessary to accommodate it. And then, in addition, 10,000 square feet of net meeting space on the north side of the building. Okay? This is a really significant slide. Shows that 60,000 square feet of gross meeting space is needed. If you start on the bottom of the slide, you see the 150-room hotel. There's a corridor that connects the hotel to the pre-function area. That pre-function area is the area where many of us have experienced it. You check in for the conference that you're going to be attending, or if you're inside the ballroom, you need to step out and take a phone call, you do it there. It also is a place where oftentimes happy hours are held. It's a vital piece of the overall puzzle. On the right side, and if I had a pointer, I'd point right at it, and the grayish area is all back-of-house, okay? Starting at the bottom, employee break area, storage area, kitchen, and an electrical room. Couple of things worth pointing out here is that you need significant storage in back-of-house when you're operating one of these, because when you're hosting conventions, when you have a state cheerleading convention, and they're using the entire free-span ballroom space, you have to have someplace for your table and chairs. That's where that'll go. One second. On the top of the slide, there's a 10,000 square feet of meeting space where the existing movie theater is. That will be retrofitted. The reason why we really like this plan is that it provides maximum flexibility with the facility. You are able to host the cheerleading convention that I just shared with you in the ballroom space. They can be as loud as they want. At the same time, you can host lawyers or CPAs in the meeting space. They'll have their own entrance from the exterior, their own parking, their own warming facilities for food and beverage facilities for beverage. There'll be no crossover. If it's a national cheerleading convention, you can bleed over and use both areas or vice versa. Also worth pointing out, the 20,000 square foot we are proposing is almost twice of what is currently offered in Jefferson City. The reason why this is significant is because we've gone around and talked to many, many people. We've met with the visitors bureau, and we've met with others that are trying to attract people from around the state and around the country to come to Jefferson City. We believe there are over 100 groups, trade groups and others, that have expressed interest over the years in coming to Jefferson City, but have not come here because of inadequately sized facilities, specifically not enough ballroom space. This ballroom will be completely freestanding. It'll be the best ballroom in outstate Missouri. We'll be able to attract and go after any convention that we want to. Won't spend much time here. This highlights the two entrance points, one for the hotel and one for the convention center. If someone is coming to stay at the hotel and will be attending a conference, most likely they'll go through the front door of the hotel. If it's a black tie dinner that we have many of in this city, and that season's about to start, you won't go through the hotel, you won't have to, anyway. On the west side, it's highlighted in red around the edges, the conference will have its own entrance. That'll be accessible in all weather conditions, including rain. This is the first floor of the new hotel. There's two areas that are assigned for meeting space. That equals about between 1,000 and 2,000 square feet, which is not included in the meeting space that we've outlined so far. So that will be additional meeting space for small meetings for hotel guests or conventions and our guests. Also, the kitchen I spoke about a few moments ago will be of adequate size to service the convention center and the meeting space on the north side of the building. The kitchen in the hotel will be adequate for the hotel, but they will be independent of one another. Good. Let's switch gears a little bit on us. This project, and the reason why Kirk and I, the core of the reason why we got involved is because we live here, and we understand that this has been an 80-year-plus pursuit. We want to see it happen because of the economic shot in the arm that this will create. For every Jefferson City citizen, everyone will benefit. We want to work with leaders from different parts of the city, different wards, to come up with points of interest that we can provide transportation to through a shuttle service. For instance, downtown. The Capitol Building, we understand, is a huge draw. It's five minutes from the front door of our proposed site, five-minute drive. We're going to provide a shuttle from the front door to every star on this screen. Okay? So you'll be able to be dropped off at the Capitol Building and every block downtown. We also want to point out, there's another hotel on this slide that we have a star next to. We're going to need additional hotel rooms from time to time, because we're going to go out and we're going to track the biggest and best conventions. And they're not all going to be able to fit in 150 rooms. We want them to feel connected. And that's why we included that star on there. Next slide. The prison site, we talked a little bit about that tonight. We are thrilled for the investment from the state and the city that is going on there. It's an incredible draw. And we want to highlight that. We want to highlight that and other points of interest downtown and other parts of the city with, you know, free or reduced cost advertising. We want to get with those leaders and figure out what do we need to do to make sure that when someone comes to Jefferson City and stays at our convention center for the first time, they have as much fun as possible, because we want them to come back. If they just come once and then they leave, that's not what we're going after. We want them to come back. So we're going to get them plugged into the community. This is one way we're going to do it. We're going to drop them off at the front door of the prison tour. Expansion. Charles Johnson and his team outlined in their feasibility study that the 30,000 net meeting space that we outlined tonight and 150-room hotel is adequate for the needs today. But it's going to be a success. And in order for us to be able to look ahead and handle that success, there might be a time when we need to grow this facility. So we're already thinking about that. We don't know if it's going to be, we don't know how long it's going to be, but we want to be ready. Great thing about our site is that you have 145,000 existing square feet that could be made available. Now, we plan to fill a lot of that with retailers, and we're going to do it. So that's why it's important to notice the outlots that we have available. The ones that make the most sense are the three that I've highlighted, 1.75 acres, 1.25, and 1.5 acres. There's plenty of room for expansion. Another thing I want to point out here is that we've got 3,000, plus or minus 3,000 square feet of, 3,000 spaces of striped existing parking lots, parking spaces in our parking lot, with an opportunity to grow that parking lot, another 1,000 spaces utilizing pieces of ground that we own around the perimeter. Parking's not an issue, and it's not a cost at our facility. You also have a site that is about 60 acres that is currently developed. The site work cost is zero. Okay? It's never flooded there. There's a lot of opportunity that comes at no cost. The infrastructure is there. We feel like it's adequate. We want to improve it. You know, folks have come up to me around the community and said, "I don't like when I'm driving west and it's around 5:00 and I'm trying to make that exit and I'm backed up out in the highway. It makes me nervous. I've got kids in the car." Well, we want to work together with the leaders to try to fix that. So infrastructure is important. Lots of way into this property, lots of ways out of it. So when we have 10,000 people there, they can get in and out easily, not going to be traffic jams. Okay, so the next part, I got the easy part. I got to share all the pretty pictures and it was fun. And Kirk's got another fun part. He's going to walk through how we get there. And the cornerstone of how we get there is dollars. And we have a plan that works with no annual subsidy from the general fund, utilizing the $9 million that you all are providing us. And he'll run through it with you, and I think you'll get a lot out of it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rob. So I'm in charge of kind of educating you all, hopefully for the last time, about the financial viability of the mall site. But I'm also going to run through the downtown site, and I'm also going to run through the prison site. When we look at a project, we, and we go to a bank, we have to find our uses of funds. We have our uses of funds, but we have to have our sources of funds. Okay? Our uses are clear. We have a 150-room hotel. It costs $120,000. It's an $18 million hotel. We have a convention center that's 60,000 square feet of total wall-to-wall space. At $300 a square foot, that is an $18 million convention center. That is a $36 million project. What do we have to pay for it? We have our lodging tax of $9 million, and then the developer would theoretically need to come up with the rest of the money, 27 million to equal 36. Now, here's where the analysis starts to fall apart, unfortunately. When we make an investment of $27 million, there needs to be a return on that investment. And what we, what our numbers have shown us and what the facilitator's report has shown is that the hotel itself makes approximately a million dollars after four years in stabilization. Okay? What we also know, that our analysis shows, and the facilitator's analysis shows, that the convention center loses somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000 to $300,000. So that is a total net operating income for the developer of $750,000. Now, I know that $750,000 is a lot of money to make on a return, but unfortunately, when you put $27 million into a project and you make $750,000 back, your return is less than 3%. In other words, it would take you over 35 years to get your money back. So we said, "This isn't good. How are we going to do this?" Let's look at the downtown site. The downtown site unfortunately gets more complicated. If we're comparing apples to apples, and we have a 150-room hotel, we have an $18 million hotel. If we have a 60,000-square-foot convention center, we have an $18 million convention center. But we're not done. We have land acquisition, we have site work, and we have a parking garage that is going to cost us nine more million dollars. So downtown, we have a project that's $45 million, not $36 million. Well, our sources get a little bit more complicated. We believe that developer downtown can only come up with $18 million to justify a return. So what does that mean? That means the other sources are the lodging tax of $9 million. We've got that. But the city, or somebody, not the developer, is going to have to come up with another $18 million to get to 45. Well, the net operating income doesn't change. The convention center losses don't change. You still have an NOI of $750,000. But what that does is if you don't get that subsidy of $250,000 a year that you need to offset the convention center losses, and you don't get that city contribution, your return is 2.2%. That's ugly. So let's look at the downtown, or the Missouri State Penitentiary. The State Penitentiary, if we put 150-room hotel, is still 18 million. We still have an $18 million convention center. Okay? But now we really run into some issues. We've got to get there, so we've got to put in some roads. We've got to build a big parking garage, okay, 600 spots. And we have to acquire the land, which we have no guarantee of doing. We have a total project cost at the prison site of $53 million. So how are we going to pay for that if the developer's only going to put in 18 million? Well, we've got a lodging tax of nine, that helps. We've got the extra city contribution of 18 million, which I don't think exists. And then you have to finagle with the state and the county to get that extra $8 million to get to your 53 million. Well, now you've got to figure out what you're going to do about the $250,000 loss you're going to have a year at the convention center. Well, you've got to subsidize it. So if you don't do any of that, your return is 1.7% on the developer's investment. Inflation goes up more than that. So what is the cost to the public? Well, downtown has the lodging tax that the voters have approved of $9 million. But there's a funding gap of 18 million, plus we believe the subsidized loss of the convention center. So downtown, the total cost to the public is $27 million, plus the annual subsidy of the convention center loss. The prison, we have the lodging tax that the voters approved, but we have a larger funding gap of $26 million. But we still have to fund that loss of the convention center. So we've got a $35 million cost to the taxpayer, plus a $250,000 hole that needs to be filled every year. Guys, it doesn't look good for either one of those sites. But what we can do at the mall is we can use existing infrastructure, commonly-used developer tools that are used already in the city, in our neighboring cities, across the state and across the country for decades, to fill this funding gap. And then we don't need an annual subsidy. So I'd like for Rob to kind of help me close things out.
And, yeah, we really appreciate the opportunity to share this information. We want to, I know all of you all are going to study both best and final proposals, and I would encourage anyone here or at home to also go online and look at the data that we've provided. We feel like we have a very in-depth plan. We realize that this is a historic moment, and it's something that we can do together. If chosen, we will work collaboratively with the city leadership every step of the way with an open book process and make something happen that is 80 years overdue. Thank you very much.
So I'd like to close things. I'd like to thank you all. I'd like to thank the administrator, the mayor, and the facilitator for running a very good process to date. We are somewhat disappointed that the folks in this room didn't have an opportunity to hear both of the plans. The Earharts are good people. They're smart businessmen. They're first-class operators. Would love to have them operate a hotel and own a hotel convention center. But their absence is telling. They know the numbers, just like we do. You all know the numbers now. So what we believe is that we are competing not against the downtown site. We're not competing against the prison site. What we're competing with is doing nothing. Now, I believe that there is a quiet majority of the public in this town that wants this community to grow. But we are a very fiscally responsible community. We do not want to stretch our city's budget. We do not want a subsidy. So our team, we, our family, very cognizant of the emotional attachment to the two sites originally put out in the RFP. We like the downtown site. We like the prison site. But unfortunately, we have educated ourselves enough to know that that dream doesn't really have a chance of becoming a reality. So you, as a council, have a very phenomenal chance to make a very big decision. We have the opportunity to create the best hotel and convention center and the best mixed-use development in the outstate Missouri. The best part is, we don't need an ongoing subsidy from the general revenue fund to do it. It costs the community to do our project at the mall no more than doing nothing. So I know there's a lot of supporters here tonight. If you all are in support of this plan that doesn't require an annual subsidy, could you all raise your hand or stand up? To us, this is an easy choice. This is a good choice. We can make this happen. Let's do it. Thank you.
Drew, first of all, I want to thank both of our developers. I know the Earharts couldn't be here tonight. Kirk and Rob, thank you, and thank all your supporters for being here tonight. This is a project, as we said earlier, that's been on our minds for 80 years. Now it's time to get to work and hopefully try to get something done. Drew, do you have anything else tonight? Can you give us the reminders, please? We'll have the audience and the press here as far as our open hearings for next week, please.
Sure. And if I'll start with both, we'll put both proposals on our website. It'll be on the front page of jeffcitymoe.org tomorrow for anyone to see. Next Tuesday at noon, we'll have a public hearing in this room. Anyone can speak. We'll have five minutes available for as long as people want to be here. Next Thursday, week from today, we'll also have a public hearing in this room at 5:30. And I'm not sure we put the time, probably five minutes again, and I guess we'll last as long as we can last. We might have a timeline at some point, I suppose. But I know the council's very interested in public input, so I think that's all I've got.
And of course, on the 18th, we'll be looking at some other things. I'd like to ask the audience, people watching on TV, people listening on the radio in the morning, whatever it might be, Madeline for the paper, if you believe in a conference center, or if you don't, one way or the other, let myself and this council know, because the people that you see in front of you tonight are really going to be the ones that make this decision along with the developers, both developers. And it's very, very, very important that we hear from you. So please do that. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have a question first.
Okay.
I have a question of staff. On that last presentation, I know the discussion is there's no annual subsidy on this particular proposal. So the part that we didn't really get to hear about tonight is the piece about other funding, other incentives that could be used either for this or the downtown site. So just to be completely clear, could you answer the question of what the other incentives are? I don't want people to leave thinking that there aren't any. And I guess the other piece of it is the presentation had the other site, the downtown site, it can't work because here's the numbers. I mean, there's land acquisition, there's numbers that came from the other proposer, so we don't have another proposer here. They can't be here tonight to, I wouldn't say defend those numbers, but are those numbers accurate? They're the farmer's numbers from this proposal, and that makes sense. But perhaps those other sites, I guess, want to hear the words, "Those can't be used, they can't be done, it can't be done here." We don't know what other, perhaps the same sort of funding, perhaps a TIF or other funding would be done on the other site. So how could you clarify that, just for those in attendance tonight?
Drew, is that something you clarify, or is it something the developers clarify?
Well, I guess it'd be, I would think it'd be better for each developer to clarify it for themselves. We did get the Earharts proposal in in the early afternoon, late afternoon hours, and so I do have that. But I think we all know up here what we've talked about in closed session a couple of times, but I'm not positive that either final proposal is exactly how we talked about it before. So without an opportunity to prove it, I kind of hate to speculate. Certainly TIFs are something we've talked about. I think, looking through the proposal on the Earharts, I know they mentioned Modesta, a statewide super TIF, some property abatement through Missouri Chapter 353, which is, well, let me just clarify, since I'm on around. On the Earharts proposal, they looked at the, they're asking for city tax exempt status for all FF and E furniture purchases, Modesta funding, parking garage, so that would be accurate, super TIF designated to return all state sales tax, property tax back, so that's a true state super TIF, property abatement through 353, encumbrance and use of the parking garage. I haven't had a chance to look through the farmer's proposal to see how they've addressed those. Again, I think certainly in our previous discussions, TIFs were involved and CIDs, I think, so I hate to say without looking, because it could have changed since we talked. Is that the answer?
Is that, is that okay, Carrie? Mr. Bray? Mr. Bray?
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
So moved.
It's been moved by Ralph and seconded by Henry. Discussion, saying none. None. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Or oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you all very much. Drive safe.